You're watching Cable 2.
My name is Shay Woodbury, Chair of the Board. I'm going to officially call our meeting to order and establish a roll call. Present, we have Board Member Jones, Board Member Crowley, Board Member Kaplan, Board Member Parker, of course, myself. So, we have five here, and I think we have Board Members, online Board Member Mott Singer and Board Member Bremer.
That's what I was asking.
So, a quorum has been established. Deion, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, second.
If there are no further questions or discussion, please let it be known by aye with consensus.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So, we have a one discussion item, which is the Phase Reentry High School Student Return Update and Recommendation by our Interim Superintendent, Ms. Trish McManus.
So, good evening, Chair Woodbury and Members of the Board. And thank you for allowing me to bring an update about the return of our high school students. I do not think it is a secret that I want every student in our building right now. I think I've been pretty consistent with that message because I know, and I know that research tells us, the majority of our students need in-person instruction and time for peer interaction. Remote learning is not working for all. It's actually not working for many. And, right now, fifty-three percent of our high school students planned to return, starting next week, so just so you have an idea of numbers. Each time I have stood before you, I have done so after collaboration with public health officials and healthcare partners, and many hours of debriefing with staff, principals, community members, teachers, and parents. And so, the same advisors and experts that we've worked with on the other return are the same ones I've been meeting with for the last several weeks about our high school return. I do not make these decisions in isolation, and many factors are weighed as we bring recommendations to the Board. So, the advice from healthcare partners and health officials that we've been meeting with is to push pause after the aggressive return of seven grade levels within two weeks. And I'm going to explain why. It is not because of the lack of desire to bring students back. The recommendation or the advice is around the pauses for a reason, and that is to assess current data related to case investigation and contact tracing, and ensure that all systems and resources we currently have in place will effectively meet the needs of our high school students as we complete our safe return. We have partnered, as you all know, we've talked about it quite a bit, with Duke Collaborative. We have an MOU with them. They have agreed to analyze our data from the outside, obviously with no names, but analyze that data, and give us feedback on any adjustments that we should make prior to bringing the next group of eight thousand five hundred and ninety-seven students into our school buildings. And that is the number of high school students that had planned to return. So, that is fifty-three percent was eight thousand five hundred and ninety-seven according to our records from our high school principals. According to CDC guidance, case investigation and contact tracing are essential part of the mitigation strategies to reduce further transmission. And, I know we've talked a lot about the mitigation strategies our schools have prepared for, and they are completely ready in schools with the handwashing, the social distancing, all of the things that they've prepared for. As we've been out in schools, we've seen that. But, we have to do the contact tracing and case investigation with efficacy to ensure that staff and students are safe. And so, at this point, the recommendation was, by our partners, or the advice of our partners, was to pause, analyze those, and determine if the resources of your system are adequate for that next layer of students. And so, these are the same partners, again, that have been encouraging of, schools are the safest place for students to be, but they are agreeing that a pause to analyze and to make any adjustments necessary when you're going to bring now high school students back, which, it's a more complex return. I'm just going to tell you, it is not the same return. And, this is after talking to many high school principals. I have one in the room tonight that, if there are any questions after, that has agreed to answer any potential specific questions about high school structures, scheduling, transitions, and all of that. And so, basically, I wanted to read just one point out of the CDC guidelines because the pause is really about to carefully analyze our processes and make any adjustments necessary knowing the complexities of high school. And so, here is what the guidance says. It says, "As K-12 schools resume in-person learning, case investigation and contact tracing with staff, teachers, and students should be anticipated as a crucial strategy to reduce further transmission once a case is identified." And so, again, it is a crucial strategy even outside of the mitigation strategies that we are implementing every day. As we have returned other grade levels, we have followed the science and the advice given from our healthcare partners. These are scientists and doctors who study and treat infectious diseases for a living. We know that schools are safe when the mitigation strategies are followed, but these are the same partners who do share concerns and special considerations when it comes to the return of high school students. And, again, a short pause would be to ensure that we analyze everything as it relates to elementary and middle, as we carefully bring back this next group of students into our schools. So, my recommendation, again, is based on the input from many experts, our site-based leaders. All seventeen of them were involved in the input of our high school leaders. It is not based, and I want to make sure that I say this to you all, because we know that so much comes through our inbox, it is not based on any external pressure, and it never has been through any other return. It is based on what we are learning and what we believe is best for our students and their education. So, my recommendation is that we delay the return of high school students that are not currently in school, because there are some small fractions that are. So, this is no change in current, it is delaying those that are not currently in school to February twenty-second, which is actually a three-week delay, as a week of February fifteenth was a remote learning week in our calendar. So, during the next three weeks, we will analyze case investigation and contact tracing data. We will add additional contact tracers to our current contact tracing team to ensure, with the movement of high school students, you elevate the need for very immediate contact tracing, because they are moving more often and more frequently between classes, and that we begin the rollout, which we just started, of dedicated COVID subs and other strategies to port our schools, to support our schools as they, as they have exposures and potential quarantines. And, so, all of that will be, continue to be analyzed and developed so that on February twenty-second, we will ensure the safety, the safe return of our students. Again, this has always been about the safe return of our students. Now, I wanted to say one more thing before we go to discussion, and that is, we owe it to our students to do more than just pull them into a screen for instruction. We owe the five hundred and sixteen who are going to come back from Atkins and the fifty-seven at Carter, and the, I'm sorry, Carter's been back, the two hundred and thirty-six at Carver, the eighty at Early College, the list goes on. These students, the seven hundred and eight that would be going to Mount Tabor, the, I have all the numbers right here, the two hundred and seventy-two that were going to be going back to Parkland. So, these students, obviously, their parents and the, and the students themselves made a decision that I want to be in school. There are reasons for that. And, it could be, it could be socialization. It could be that. It could be academic struggles with the online learning. So, what I'm going to say is, as we, over the next three weeks, and I have spoken to my team about this, and we'll be talking to our leaders about this, I want every one of those students to be given a personal outreach from our school staff by either a counselor, a social work, a social worker, an AP, we have psychologists, we have staff everywhere. Find out what their challenges are, and then, please provide creative solutions. We have care teams, we have all of these people, that originally it was for engagement. We are beyond that. We know a lot of kids have turned off those screens and are just tired of this experience. And so, I'm asking for more than that at this point, and not asking, I'm expecting more. And I will tell you, these will be check, thorough check-ins and innovative supports, which may include counseling, peer, peer support groups, tutorials, whatever it takes. And yes, some of those might be where a small group comes to campus, because what we did see is when we have a contained setting, like high schools just did testing, you can do that. It's not difficult to contract. The challenges are less to actually contact trace when you are in more contained settings, which includes things like walking kids from class to class, or having teachers rotate versus kids, all of that. And so, we can be innovative with our students. This decision to delay the masses of return does not mitigate the fact that we need to make sure we have reached every one of these students that is on this list that says they want to be back in school on Monday. And so, with this decision, as you can, you can probably tell, it is not an easy recommendation for me, as I want kids in school, and that, no one can say anything different than that. It is to bring that last group back, making sure that we are properly resourced, that we've analyzed our data, that we've made any suggested changes from our partners as they look at our data, and that we return as safely as possible. So, thank you for your time. I know I talked a lot. Do you need me to repeat my recommendation, or do you remember it?
It's on the paper.
It's on the paper? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any questions or comments solely on the recommendation around the high school student return modification for clarity before we take the motion for action?
I think Ms. Mott Singer had her hand up for a while.
Okay. Board Member Mott Singer.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair Woodbury, and thank you, Ms. McManus, for, you're always being concerned about students. I have a couple of questions. One is, what is the preparation, both through the Health Department, Novant Health, Wake Forest Baptist Health, to getting our staff immunized against COVID as quickly as possible as essential workers?
Yes, so that is a good question, and we just met about this, I think it was yesterday. We meet about this every week, and there had been dates set, and then they've been pushed back based on not the ability of the departments to do it, but of the actual vaccines that they are receiving, and how many they're receiving. So, I will say, the good news is that the, our surveys are complete. They were completed as of January nineteenth, so now we have an exact list of who, which of our staff members do want the vaccine. We have now sent that to the Health Department. Novant, this weekend, reached out to the Health Department and said they would help us in this, as they also have vaccinations. And so, I will tell you, we just sent her, they said, send us start with sixty-five and over, and let's go down the list. And so, we are hoping for much more fast action. As soon as we have the exact date, we are going to publish that. But, I am hoping it is no later than the beginning of February. But, again, Board Member Mott Singer, I want to give you a date when they say this is when we're starting. We're supposed to start in five of our, five of our schools, I think, were the options for people to choose from.
Are teachers considered frontline workers, essential workers?
In the, in the, in the reporting of the fact that they were going to move up for the vaccination, it does describe them as that, as essential workers in the paperwork we've gotten around the vaccinations. Yes.
Because, because it seems to me, from my perspective, that until our staff have been vaccinated, they are going to be very, very anxious, as they should be. And, that one of the things that can happen that can make things better quickly is getting staff vaccinated. And I'm wondering, again, on a local community level, can we create real urgency amongst the people who have access to vaccines?
I will, yes, the, yes, we have been, I wish if Ms. Bonner Reed was in, oh, you are in here. Do you want to say anything more about the contact tracing, Javelin? Because it...
On your vaccine.
I'm sorry, the vaccine, the vaccine, yes. Come on, Ms. Bonner Reed's going to come up.
Thank you.
Yeah, we are in contact, not only with public health, Novant, it was suggested even Baptist, so that we spread it out, we get as much opportunity as possible for us to get vaccinated. What the issue is right now is we are essential workers, but then the age differentiation came out towards the end of December, where it put prioritization, as it should be, on the highest risk based on age. So, it's going to be a rollout where we'll roll out our employees that are sixty-five and older. That's what we're pushing for, to get as soon as possible, because they meet the age limit and they're essential, and then we can roll out beyond that. So, that's where we are on the vaccine, is spreading it out. The community seems to be supporting us, and any support we will take. And, so, we're working with those different partners.
Okay. The part I'm just a little confused about, honestly, is that medical people who are essential workers go to the front of the line. And I'm wondering why our teachers and our staff don't go to the very front of the line.
I can't speak to that, except for they've established the priorities, and we're the next group, and thankfully, at least our staff that's sixty-five and over can get this sooner rather than later.
Because, obviously, my feeling is that until people have been vaccinated, we probably should not have anybody in school, because we're so close, we're so close. We've already had some deaths in our staff tied to COVID, and I would really like to see us get to the other side of everyone getting their first vaccine. Because it's so close, because it's so close, we can see it coming. I had another question for Ms. McManus, please.
Yes, ma'am.
And that question is, what other large urban districts are having in-school at this moment in time?
So, I have all of the districts, both large urban and then surrounding districts with me, so I can let you know that. Wake County will remain remote until mid-February, and then they will return. CMS is delayed of high school until February twenty-second. Guilford returned their high school delay for three weeks, which will be mid-February. Durham are staying Plan C till the end of the school year. And Cumberland delayed return of all students till March fifteenth. Those are the large urbans.
So, is anybody else having elementary and middle school students in Carson right now?
Yes. So, so, yes. So, the high school CMS, for example, that was the delay of high school. Guilford's been in with their elementary, they delayed on middle and high at the same time, but they've had elementary in five days a week, longer than we have, actually. Yes.
CMS also delayed to middle school, but they have K-eight schools that have been delayed, but...
That have been back. So, CMS has, thank you, Javelin, CMS has delayed middle and high, but they have K- through eight schools in session that have not been delayed.
But, we have, this is Board Member Jones, but we have public high schools, it may not be Blake and Charlotte, but we have, there's plenty of public high schools that have been going.
Yes, there are. And because their districts are smaller, their high schools are large, and so, just the surrounding districts, in the Piedmont Triad, some of these are, Surrey is in-person, Stokes is in-person, Yatkins are in-person, they're in, all of them are in Plan B, but they're in-person. Thomasville delayed to February eighth, Davie returned on October twenty-sixth, Davidson is in-person, I mean, I could keep going. The majority of the surrounding districts are in-person. So, those are, that's, those are the statistics, I mean, not the statistics, but that is the information from, that we just received on, actually, this weekend, from the surrounding districts and the large urbans.
So, what have we learned from the high schools that have been back in-person? Because, you know, I mean, Davie's been back in since August, so, and that's a very large high school. They're switching classes, I mean, I saw, they're doing band, they're doing everything. So, I'm trying to figure out what, I'm trying to figure out, what are we going to learn in the next three weeks that we don't already know from high schools that are, that are back in, as far as spread or contact tracing, that kind of thing?
I think that what would be helpful, yeah, I'm sorry, but I think what might be helpful, actually, in this delay as we are collecting data, is to let, and I don't know, did you want to speak at all? Come on up. Is to, if you don't mind, is to have our high school principals actually have a chance to visit some of those, they may have already, I'm not sure, but I, to visit some of those, because, again, high school is a different beast when it comes to, and that, that's exactly what the doctors and everyone has said to me, but I'll let, do you want to respond to that real quick?
Well, I would just say that if we're just, if we, if we, if we're just starting to figure out that we needed to learn and visit, then what have we been doing for the last ten months? I mean, I just think that, I mean, and I say that because we have, we have, until the special called meeting, we had already voted on what, on what our return was going to be. And we are not saying to shut down athletics.
True.
We're not saying to shut down elementary school or middle school.
If you all can hold your applause so we can get through, thank you.
So, I just, I just, I mean, I want to hear from a principal, but it just blows my mind that we're sitting here, and it's, and we're talking about going, I mean, I know many of the board members have been visiting our, our schools in the, in the, not just our schools, but other schools that had in-person instruction, and I would think that we would already been doing that.
Well, again, I'm going to go back to our highs, they are prepared. If you walk into our high schools right now, you will see preparation. Remember my recommendation and what it's based on today. This is not based on the fact that I don't think they're ready. So, that's not what this is about. This is based on the fact that the experts that we've been listening to all along that says, go back, schools are the safest place, are at the point recommending that you just brought back seven grade levels, quickly, pause, analyze, and then bring your largest, you know, that, that group of high schoolers back, which is a more complex situation. It's not that they're not ready, that the schools are not ready. It really is about just stopping for a minute to analyze. And again, so I'm going to say, this initially came up because of that, because of that feedback.
And so, what, when we analyze the data, what are we going to, what, what do they want us, so, in elementary and middle, what are, what, at the end of this, help me understand what we're going to get out of it, so that, that would make the difference for high school reentry?
Right. So, the need potentially for even more contact tracers. So, right now, contact tracers, and again, if you think about this process, some districts, their health department does all the contact tracing. In our district, it, because it is, we're doing the contact tracing, just so you know. So, because we need to be able to notify immediately if you are a close contact of someone that is a positive case, so that you do not return to school. And when you get into cases of large spread, and I will, to the athletics point, it is contained. It is not difficult to notify a team and to contact trace a team. Testing was not an issue. It's contained, it's not difficult to know who that child potentially came in close contact with. That's the difference of the, not just athletics, but extracurricular programs, band, dance, and the other ones that have started. And so, that's the difference there. So, what might, what might we learn? What might be learned from the data? That we might need to hire ten more contact tracers? I mean, honestly, to be able to...
Well, let's just hire them now. Let's just do, I mean...
We can, but then when you hire them, you need to train them. It's not, it's a process. So, we already have a team. But, I will also tell you, the team, there were two or three major players on that team that, that moved on. And so, it is replenishing the team, I mean, it, again, this has been ongoing daily work. It has not been waiting till now. And these conversations literally came up as a result of feedback, and, and from experts, from our principals, and so, and I don't know if you want any questions for Lizzie, I'm not sure you need to speak, or if you have questions for a high school principal, you don't have to, just if you have questions, I wanted her to be here.
What's the wait time for county health department contact tracers? What, what's, like, if there's a case and we're depending on our health department, like other counties are, what's the delay before they can notify everybody who's been in contact?
So, in ours, what had it been, Javelin?
I just know when we went down the journey of getting contact tracers, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, do it here.
I just know that when we went down the journey to decide to staff up our own contact tracers, it was getting very close to people being at the end of a quarantine by the time they were notified.
How short? Like fourteen days before?
Like thirteen, fourteen days.
Okay.
But, that was something when we were all trying to figure that out early in March. And, it has been a challenge, so we decided we wanted to partner and contribute to that so we could let people know in a lot less time and try to keep people safer. And we're, we're committed to that, to continue with that. And knowing with all the changes in the class and what would be involved in that, we're looking ahead. And we're also looking to focus on this last group of six grades that we just started with two weeks ago. We want to make sure that is as tight as possible before we add four more grades. So, that is some more of the thought behind it.
Board Member Mott Singer, before you ask your next question, I did want to get clarification around a point that was made, and Dr., Ms. McManus, you may need to make clarification around, although the point was made around, some of our staff members or a couple of them unfortunately have been passed away from COVID, that I don't know if there was any assumption that it was, you know, on our campus, or what did we find out by contact tracing? Could you verify that information? Because I don't want the public to think that we're not due diligent in making sure all our staff and students are safe.
Yeah, so, I, I will say, we, we did contact trace every situation we've had, and we know, because people report where they were exposed. And I just, I'm not sure that, that I would share that. I mean, is that something that I can share? I, I don't, Deion? I mean, I really, I don't want to, again, we have contact tracing...
I don't want us to reveal anybody, but I'm just saying that it was said that we have had staff die from COVID, and someone could infer that they, we know for sure that it was contracted on our campus or not. So, if they were never on our campus prior to, so I'm just trying to make sure, exactly. I just want to make that clear.
Yes. Many of the exposures have happened in the community or in the home, another, another sibling, a spouse that's working, other things like that. Again, I don't want to downplay, any, any death or anywhere that had occurred is, is not good. And, you know, my deepest sympathy to any families, but I will say, yes, we're able to get it down to that level, because people report it, as the minute they're positive, they tell us where they, where they were exposed. And so, we do have that information, Chair Woodbury, and I, yes, absolutely.
Board Member Mott Singer, I know you had your hand up.
Yes, I, my other question...
Yes, I, my other question is, are we doing any, um, just testing in the schools, given that fifty percent of the people who transmit COVID remain asymptomatic?
No, we are not currently doing a testing, uh, a testing program.
So, I mean, my big concern, again, is that we're not doing testing, that contact tracing is helpful, but mostly helpful when community transmission is in much lower levels. At this point, the level of transmission is very high in our community. And of course, we now know that the more contagious variant is present in our, in the country, and I believe in North Carolina. And so I'm concerned because I feel like we're always a couple steps behind the science. My biggest wish is that we pause for all staff, put a lot of pressure to get our folks immunized, that if the community and Wake Forest and Nevada wants children in schools, let's vaccinate our staff so that they're not so frightened and we can go back to school.
Thank you, Board Member Mott Singer, I think Board Member Bremer has her hand up. You're muted.
Myself there, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I have a couple of quick questions. First, um, on contact tracing, we are relying on self-tracing. We do not have a dynamic tracing system that actually lets people know how long you've been, like other countries, South Korea does it, by tracing phones. We do not trace anything other than by self, so it's very easy to miss a group of people you're standing next to, or how long you were contagious and carried.
Is that a question or a point?
I am, I'm getting to the question.
You making a question? Okay.
So, you know, knowing that we don't have the contact tracing, what is the people, what are the people that are responsible for contact tracing, saying how fast they're gonna be able to get to us and accurately every single person that has it?
So I, I will answer that, so, so to respond prior to the contact tracing, number one, we are encouraging social distancing and masking, and so if you look at what deems a close contact, it's when you are within six feet, you could still have your mask on, but within six feet, even with your mask on. So let's, for first of all, when I've gone to schools the last two weeks, I've seen people, teachers, students, following those mitigation strategies. I understand also the challenges in, in classrooms, and teachers are working very hard as they're circulating. I understand all that, and I've spoken to teachers as I have visited. As far as our contact tracing process, that is the process that any health department's taking. We're following what they would have done, which is, if I report that I'm a positive case, they're going to ask me, they're probably gonna ask me to tell the people that were close contacts to me. What we're doing is we are actually reaching out to the close contacts that are reported by that person. And that, you're right, that is the process we're following, but that would be the process that health departments are following as well, unless they're using something that you're talking about with, with a phone app. But right now, that is the process, yes ma'am?
And the second question I had is, we know for a fact, and people have published for the fact, that the flu is mainly carried and transmitted by school students during the school year. So what makes this so different that it is not gonna be spread the way flu is spread?
Uh, so, Board Member Bremer, I, I think that question is out of our scope, but I think the superintendent can try to follow up with some healthcare doctors and get back to you at another time. Thank you for your question. Board Member Mott.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm, Board Member Mott Singer, I'm sorry, there, there was another board member with her hand up, and I didn't see. I saw you, but didn't see her, and she had actually raised her hand before you, I was told, so. Board Member Kaplan, I'll get to you, thank you.
Okay, thanks, um, so Dr. Alexander, can I ask you a couple of questions? I am terribly conflicted here because I want to rely on the experts, I want to support the recommendation. I get all of this, and I'm just trying to think, is there a compromise that we can all get behind, or most of us get behind? And so I want to ask you, we sort of talked about this a little bit, some of us in some conversation. What would it look like if we, instead of taking all of the, bringing all of the kids back, what, is it possible to do the ninth graders? Uh, for, for a period of time, and then on the twenty second, um, bring back the rest? And this would give them a couple of weeks, because you'd have the four cohorts, and then you'd have that week off? Would this help to ease the transition?
So Chair Woodbury and school board members, thank you for letting me speak to you a bit. Um, I definitely think that that compromise is better than everyone coming back on the twenty fifth. I will say that, um, this is not a situation that existed exactly as it is ten months ago, because things change. And one thing I appreciate about Ms. McManus is her willingness to look at the data and to consult with the school leaders, because ultimately, we're responsible for the safety of our students. And I want the school board and everyone to hear that high school principals want students back. They need us, and quite honestly, we need them. Um, it was good to have them back for testing, um, but we owe them and their families the knowledge that we can do that safely. And I will say that I have the utmost confidence in my high school colleagues, they're amazing people, there are great plans in place, but the best laid plans still have resources that you have to have in place to make them work. And so the fact that Ms. McManus said we just brought, you know, these, these levels back, and we need to take a look and see what, how that's working, um, I think we have to consider what resources we have and, and are they in place for us to bring everyone back successfully? Um, today's substitute fill rate was sixty-seven percent, that means there were sixty-four jobs that were not filled. When I talk to all the high school principals, and if there's anything I've learned in my nine years of being a high school principal, is it's hard to get all high school principals to create anything. All seventeen of us do not feel that the twenty fifth, that we have the supports in place from a, from a, from a teacher standpoint, a staffing standpoint, to make that happen. If we had all called in our absences for today, we would have added eighty-one positions to that fill list that were unfilled. So that's some things we have to think about to be able to do this safely. So I think that, you know, if we, if we ease back into that, that's absolutely accurate, that would be better. But I think what Ms. McManus said, as far as, we've only had seventh and eighth graders back for three days, right? And so in support of analyzing how that's gone, and in support of those levels, we need to understand that they have substitute needs already there before we get back. So we have to be able to do that in a manner where we can ensure safety. So, so yes, that would be a compromise, a compromise, but we would need to be able to do that safely.
And how many ninth graders, do you know, that we have?
I have the list.
Okay, good. So, so I, so what I'm hearing, I kind of, what I'm hearing though is, is I think earlier Ms. McManus said that external pressure, it's not the external pressures that's making this.
No.
But what I'm, I'm hearing is that, so not having staffing or absence, so it's kind of the internal implode that seems to be causing us, so imploding within.
Yes, with all of the other grade levels back.
It's not from, from, from out, from outside. I like that, that the compromise, Ms. Kaplan, I think that's, you know, ideally, I would like to see, you know, all of the students come back. I think that they, the ones who have chose that, and their families have chosen that, think that they would like to, to see that. I think, I think that was a great idea because we were talking about, you know, sixth grade came back and before seventh and eighth. I heard from middle school principals that that was really good because they learned quite a bit. I would think that ninth grade a little bit would be kind of a little, I mean, it's not, I, I know that they, they usually are in teams, they're not changing classes, but I would think that, um, if I were a principal, I, I think a little trial run with a smaller group before we bring them all back would, would make some sense. You know, how do you get them in, you know, drop off car riders? So I, I, I think that, that's something there. And I think it, it fundamentally goes back to, you know, many people don't want to, to just, to come back. I mean, I think that they're, they do have anxiety, it is a real virus, there's, there's definitely, but I think there's just different thoughts. I also, I understand that, but I also think, you know, how do I, how do we say that, you know, I, I know the transmission, uh, the, the, the positive rates for our older students is, is troubling, but I also so appreciate that elementary school teacher and those middle school teachers that are making it work, and those principals that are making it work, and I'm sure it's not ideal, but they're doing it. And, um, you know, and what are, what are we saying, sending a message to that we, that it's okay for them to stay in, that we can't even try to, in a small way, come back to high school? It just seems like we're talking, you know, especially even too, and we're keeping our high school students out, but yet, you know, they're on that basketball court sweating and everybody, everything's going on, and, and we're okay with that. We don't, we don't touch athletics, but we surely don't want them in the classroom. It just seems like we're talking out of both sides of our mouth at the same time.
I think Board Member Mott Singer had her hand up before, um.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just, by the way, a comment I'm just seeing on WXII, the Davie County Schools is partnering with the Davie County Health Department to secure COVID-19 vaccines for district appoint, um, employees. They will be vaccinating employees on Wednesday, January twenty-seventh, and then the second shot on February nineteen. It seems to me that one of, by having, I have, first, I, I have to say to Ms. Jones, everybody wants to be back in school, students, staff, there's nobody who doesn't want our children back in school. There's nobody who doesn't think this is hard and painful and difficult, because we all do.
Well, thank you for sharing that, I'd see it a little different, that's your view and that's mine.
Okay. I don't know anybody who wouldn't like to be able to safely be in their classrooms with their students. I don't know anyone who'd prefer to be doing what they've been doing this year under these circumstances. My biggest concern is that we are hitting the single most deadly time of this virus, and that we are gonna lose a lot of people between now and, and herd immunity of full vaccinations. And my wish is that there was some real community pressure to both the big hospitals and the health department to prioritize school employees. Because if we want kids back to school, our employees have to feel safe enough to be back in schools. Otherwise, we're hurting morale in a way that will hit us for years and years to come. You can force people to do something for a short time, but if you, if they feel that they're not being valued and protected, it is, they'll, they'll be looking to go to the districts that stayed remote on the other side of this. So I'm really concerned about the long-term consequences. And of course, I want to see children back in school, of course, I want to see kids happy, I want teachers to be happy. That's not the issue, the issue is a difference in how critical is protecting the safety of our staff.
Thank you, Ms. Mott Singer, uh, so I, I think Board Member Parker, um, has a question, and then we'll start to, um, get back to the specific, um, recommendation of the superintendent and continue to ideally ask clarifying questions before we take the motion to vote on her recommendation. Board Member Parker?
Uh, yes, Ms. McManus, you were gonna, um, I think, give us the number of freshmen, and then I'd just like to see how many Ms. Alexander has, and I have a couple more questions about that.
Yes, ma'am, so we have, uh, two thousand four hundred and nine freshmen that want, that we're planning to return. Uh, at, at Ms. Alexander's school, it would be two ninety, is what we have listed, two ninety. Did you want to know any others?
No. That, that's good, um, well, yeah, give us the largest number that you have.
All right, uh, the largest number on here is probably at West Forsyth with four hundred and seventeen freshmen. And, let's see, after that would probably be three hundred and one, which is also close to three hundred, but the next one would be at three hundred and one East Forsyth, and then at three hundred Reagan. So those are the larger ones, and, uh, yeah.
All right, and, um, and though, oh, by the way, just, just as a reminder, they don't all come at once. I, I should remind everyone that the students are co-horted, so those students are broken into either fours or twos, right? Either, either they're either a Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Friday in a smaller school, or they're a Monday, Tuesday, and then skip the next week, or are they Monday?
Okay, so it kind of goes back and forth, but, so, yeah, just to give a picture of the numbers.
So actually, on campus, at one time, it would be much, much smaller.
Depending on the cohorts, the hard thing about this is they didn't form the cohorts, this was my lesson with Leslie. They didn't form the cohorts by this, they formed the cohorts, and, and so it depends, one cohort could be larger than another. Is that, is that accurate? Do you want to say something about that?
Yeah, yeah, cause I have a question for Ms. Alexander, too.
Okay.
So we ran the cohorts by taking all the students who opted for remote learning out of the student count. Um, and so then we did it alphabetically by dividing the, the alphabet for the school. Then we looked at each cohort, and we had to align those with their siblings at other schools to make sure they were in the same cohort. And then we had to look at the data of the cohort and do classroom capacity projections by pulling data from Power School to know exactly how many students were in each classroom every period and every cohort.
Okay, so I think that, that answers some of mine, so that, and I just, I know, I was at a middle school last week, on the first day, the sixth graders came in on a cohort, and it was, again, I, I can still remember what it's kind of like that first day you're going into a new school, and, you know, they're coming in, you know, scared, and, I mean, you know, all that stuff, um, the regular things that the freshmen would do.
Right, yes.
I just, you know, um, and, and the principal and some of the teachers, when I walked around, said that they were glad they got those sixth graders in the building without anybody else because it, it was not overwhelming for them, it gave them an opportunity to really, and they were taking little tours, you know, they each had an assigned scheduled time to take a tour around the campus, so they were familiarized with where everything was. Um, it was just a really, um, nice way, I think, of easing those sixth graders into a middle school experience, which I would think that the same might be true with you guys at a ninth grade, um, level, having those folks there, you know, a couple of weeks prior to.
Yeah, it would, I think it would have a good student benefit for them to be acclimated, have a little more personalized time. It would also have a great benefit logistically, because in speaking with middle school principals, I spoke with Lisa Bodenheimer at Wiley today, who is an amazing principal, and she was talking about how her student groups move. And, you know, at the most, they have eight classes moving at a time, typically, they have four classes moving at a time, whereas we have sixty-four classes moving at a time. So it would give us the opportunity to work through some of those logistical pieces where we think we have things figured out. But then when you actually, you know, put them into place, you might find ways of tweaking things to make things more efficient.
And they had, they had done that, I was actually there for the second cohort and not the first cohort, and, you know, the principal was telling me they had already had to change some things and put some things in place. So I don't know, I just, um, you know, watching those little sixth graders come in for their first day, and not so overwhelmed, and it also gave them time for the parents to understand the traffic patterns without not being overwhelmed, and.
Yeah, it's definitely our largest group, we have two hundred and ninety ninth graders and a hundred and seventeen twelfth graders, so you can tell the difference in the interest of that group of students in getting to school. So I think there's some benefit to that for sure.
And I, yeah, of course, I worry about staffing, but, um, I don't.
Staffing for the, covering the kids?
Well, yeah, if we have, you know, if we, if we are at a point of being critical, but, um.
So the benefit to the, to easing it back in is, while I have ninth grade teachers that have to teach classes, if I have teachers that are having to teach at home due to exposure and quarantining, I could at least pull another body into that classroom, um, so that I can supervise, because it's, you know, it's our, we have to provide supervision for students.
And I think with that being, you, you would get a. And I think with that being, you would get a better idea maybe of what your staffing's going to look like once we get some of the information in and we see what's happened with the virus and.
Yeah, exactly.
System-wide and with all the all the children that we've brought in. So.
Exactly, without having to tap into the subs that are needed in seventh and eighth and younger grades at the same time.
And the only other question I think that I would have, and it's probably for Ms. McManus, is that those folks who have that those staff who are FMLA, or they have had extensions on their timeframes, how, and maybe Ms. Jones read that this is for you, Bonner Reed, but it's, are we, will we, if we don't bring high schoolers back into the building, will we, except for the ninth graders, and if they are not, if that is not what they are, will they be, I mean, will we make some provisions for those or whatever? Or do we have anything? I mean, to me, it makes more sense not to compromise anybody.
So ma'am, we would look at it case by case, as we have done. We've looked at each of the accommodations probably four or five times. Ms. Jenkins can attest to that. So we would revisit all of those. Yeah.
And I know you all have been very good at giving extensions when possible with before you've been bringing folks back into the building and things. And so.
Absolutely. We would take another look at it.
Okay, so it would be done on a case by case basis?
Absolutely.
And would you as well get some input from principals if you had questions?
We always do in this process.
Board Member Calvert-Hayes.
I guess what really bothers me the most is when we look at our high schoolers, they're the ones that are going to have the shortest time to get ahead. The kids in elementary school have got several years, but our high schoolers are going to have a short period of time to even be able to catch up before they're out of school, they're applying for college, they're taking SATs, they're doing different things that other schools are already doing. They're bringing the kids in, and they're already doing that. I have grandchildren in Tennessee, and I have grandchildren in Georgia, and they've been going for quite a while. They're not high schoolers, but their school has been open and their high school has been open. And when I look at the advantage that those kids have over our kids, it really does bother me. And it bothers me for what schools are they going to be able to get into? How are the universities going to rate? Who went in at an early period? Who stayed out for almost the whole year? So I think that's detrimental to our high school students as to how we look at that. And that does bother me. It bothers me a lot. Also, when we were talking earlier, and this was by someone that gave us a lot of great advice, it's got, and I strongly urge you to continue with the plan, this is a quote, "for reopening high schools, especially as scientific data shows that schools are not spreaders." And this wasn't too long ago, we heard this, "and teachers are not high risk for contacting COVID if they follow safety measures." And that was what was first brought to us as to why we should go about really thinking about getting these schools open as quickly as we could. But I think we really need to think about these kids that are having a really, really hard time. I'm not a virtual person. If I had to sit there and look at that screen all day, I'd probably go crazy. I'm just going to be honest with you. Kids learn different ways. But I feel like that we really need to think about our high schoolers, where are they going to be, how are they going to travel this road? Because there's going to be competition out there, and there's going to be tough competition out there. We've got kids that have been out, gosh, for how long, but competing with the kids that are going to be taking the same test in different states and probably not getting in school because they haven't had the abilities to be able to learn that a lot of other state kids are doing right now at this minute. So that's why I feel like we need to get those doors open safely, as quickly as we can. Because I think if we don't, I think we're going to see a lot of depression. I think we've already, I think we already see that. I mean, I heard something today that, gosh, I just wanted to cry. These are kids that we're sitting up here as a board, and we're controlling whether they're coming back to school or not. That's a huge responsibility. And for the other people that feel like they don't agree with one of us or what we say, come sit in our seat. Come sit in our seat. Run. Get out there and run and see what we're going through. It's not easy. It is not easy at all. And I think every one of us sitting up here wish that we had the right answer. But we're like everybody else. We just want to do what we feel like is best for our kids. So getting them back in school, I feel like we need to do it as soon as we can. I look at the kids that are in school right now, happy. I stop along, I'm over there, I'm over there by your school. I'm over there, my officer right over there. I stop, I wave to them, how you doing, buddy? And they are happy as can be. So I think we got to start thinking more about our kids. I think we've got to start thinking about what we can do to get these kids moving along. And sometimes you can talk too much. Sometimes, because you're going to always find something that's going to stop you from doing something. But we got to look at the positive side of this. And what are we doing for our kids? And that's why we are all sitting up here on this board to do what is best for our kids. But are we doing what is best for our kids? That's all I got to say.
I think Board Member, yes, Crowley had something.
Yes, I'm really concerned about a couple things. And one is, and I feel like they're all, if you approach it from a long, the long view, you know, the long-term thing, I'm looking at our CTE kids who aren't all back in, who if they don't get their hours in.
Right.
They don't get their certificate, and they're doomed to a minimum wage job for the rest of their life because they're probably not going to go back and get the certificate. I'm very concerned about students who are in danger of not graduating. And without that diploma, they're doomed to either minimum wage or unemployment long-term.
Right.
I'm very concerned with what Ms. Calvert-Hayes alluded to, the mental health of our students, and the toll that this has taken on them, especially in light of, I haven't heard any specifics, but the recent test scores from the high school kids. I don't think, I don't think we set any records for student achievement. So for everybody who wants to say, and I've heard it over and over in emails, remote learning is working, newsflash, it is not. And we have data to prove it. So, you know, right now, our setup is to return all of high school on Monday. I think a compromise would be, given the staffing issues, I think a compromise would be to return the CTE kids that need those hours and ninth graders. And, I mean, I would be open to wait a week if you feel like that would help you with the staffing, the contact tracing, and the and getting this substitute. I mean, I know that's not a lot of time to turn things around, but I see it as a compromise.
And I did, I just wanted to respond to your question around CTE because I did get the answer a little while ago. On February 22nd, to the end of the school year would not be enough hours. So we would have to, just like before, we brought them back, even though everybody else wasn't back, we would have to do that because they won't have enough hours starting on February 22nd. I did learn that, I mean, literally 30 minutes ago. So in a text.
Thank you for getting that information.
Yeah.
Because it is, we are talking about kids' futures. So if we're talking about long-term, and, you know, I know there's, there's long-term COVID implications, but there's also clearly there's been long-term, the cure to COVID implications that we have, we have missed. If Ms. McManus, if you wouldn't mind, would you tell us how many students have died of COVID in this school year?
None that I have been informed of.
And how many have died of other causes not from COVID?
About six that I know of.
Right.
There could be others. I'm sorry, but this is what I've been informed of.
I think Board Member Mott Singer had her hand up before we go into the action. Board Member Mott Singer, I don't know if you're talking, but you're muted. Your hand was up.
Oh, thank you, Chair Woodbury. I appreciate that. How many teacher absences were today in elementary and middle schools that were unfilled? Do we know?
What was the question? I'm sorry.
How many unfilled teacher absences did we have? I'm hearing that one of the concerns about high school is unfilled absences for high school teachers. And I'm asking about elementary and middle school students.
So middle school, breakdown subs, 39 were unfilled in middle school.
Okay. And how many in high, elementary? Do we know?
Twenty, 23.
Is that, do we know if that's?
Twenty-three in elementary. Okay.
Do you know if that's a normal, how's that compare to usual?
You know, last time when I presented, I did comparisons, and it was similar, is what we saw last time. Again, schools are also, so they're not subs, they're always not going to fill the vacancy because schools are finding other solutions. If a TA, you know, at the elementary level, you have TAs, some at middle school, they are supporting vacant, you know, if there's a vacancy, or if the teacher's quarantined and they're teaching from home, there's a teacher assistant that can also do that. So there's no sub then, just so you know, like, it's not just black and white. But yes, but those are the numbers. Board Member Mott Singer.
Thank you. What, what concerns me again is, yes, our children are indeed suffering. They really are. I don't, again, I don't know anybody who's arguing that this has not been incredibly difficult for our students. It really has been. And I just want to be clear that the concerns are there for everybody. I have one other question about things like the breakfast and lunch programs. When students went back in person, is it possible for students who are learning remotely to get their bag free breakfast and lunch?
I think, is that, yeah. Yeah, what is it called? Feeding, yes. The answer is yes. They're getting it now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So that is still available in the community?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And again, I hate to be a broken record, but I really hope that we are putting enormous pressure on the Health Department and on the two big hospital systems to getting our people vaccinated because we can be on the other side of this so much sooner, once that's happened. And it will be really fraught until that happens.
Thank you, Board Member Mott Singer.
Yes. Thank you, Board Member Mott Singer.
I have one other point I wanted to get clarified. For the recommendation from our local medical experts for the pause, is it because of any increased risk that they see? Or is it more about what you said, to study kind of what we've already done and give that time?
Yes.
To kind of?
It really is, when you are in a larger district, so the pause was to analyze and ensure that you are properly resourced to handle what will happen with high school. They, both entities agreed that it is a different, it's going to be a different animal with high school. And so, again, yes, it was about, it wasn't, they did not, they were not talking about spread, although Duke did say, at a high school, there is more spread. I mean, it's with the numbers and the kids, there is more. Even our own dashboard shows that high school age kids, there is like double the spread. If you go from January, our Forsyth County dashboard has the ages. So I explored that. There are larger numbers of high school students that have had positive cases since the beginning until now, like cumulatively. So I think that's, but that's not what their focus was. So their focus wasn't, do not return your high schoolers. And I want to make sure that that is very clear. Nobody made a recommendation, do not return students to school. A pause is very different than a do not return. And I want to make sure that that's clear. All of the things we're talking about is what is good for kids, how are they going to excel later, the need, there is no doubt of any of that. And that's why we're in public education in the first place, because we want kids to have a bright future, and this is a way to get it. It's through education. So I will tell you that the reason that I even changed my, what I, we were, my thought process around what we're going to do was because of the advice. And I'll tell you, you know, Duke Collaborative the whole time is showing you the results of kids being in school and the success. And when you have an expert say, pause, you just had how many grade levels turned? Seven. They all, this is the time period, two weeks. Take a pause, analyze, we'll help you analyze, so that you can make any necessary tweaks to your systems around case investigation and contact tracing, so that when we turn high school, not if, when we return high school, which is why we said the 22nd, just because of the, because of the week of the 15th is a remote week, and it's already in the calendars. And that's, that's the reason for this tonight. That's the reason for my recommendation tonight, strictly. It is based on that, that advice.
Board Member Parker?
And I guess this is for Ms. Bonner Reed. To Elizabeth's point about the vaccines, will we also be trying to make sure that those folks that have had, you know, have had to be out because of reasons or that have had extensions and things, will we be trying to get them to the front of the line as well after we get the, as soon as they will let us? Have we had any initiative on doing that? Because I know a lot of them really want a vaccine as well.
I'm glad to have another opportunity to talk about the vaccines, actually. And that is because we all have to follow what the state tells us we have to do in terms of the vaccine. So that includes Novartis, that includes Baptist, that includes Forsyth County Department of Public Health. If they don't follow that process, then they'll hold, my understanding, I just had a discussion about that, they'll hold back their ability to continue to get the supply. So that's first and foremost. And what has been given to us is that the priority is based on age right now. When it opens up, but also when we give the list of, you know, this is who we are hoping to have the vaccine for, we are, as a team, coming together and prioritizing that. We don't know that they'll use that priority because once we hand it over, it's their process. But we do try to provide some priorities based on as much contact as you're having with others. We want to put that first, school-based people first, transportation, just things like that. So we are looking at all that. And then you bring in two accommodations as well.
Okay, good. So those folks that are in ADA and all those, we would have those on a list that would be given to them as a priority list. Is that correct?
We would have them on a list as well, and we get direction from them on how we can do the priorities as well.
Right. But, yeah, but we would prioritize those that are more at risk, you know, let's say, a cancer survivor, a, you know, a severe, you know, asthmatic or any of those things. Is that correct?
Ms. Jenkins, is there anything we should consider in that? I just want to make sure that we're.
I mean, I think we can, we can develop our own kind of internal prioritization, but we don't really have control over.
Sure.
The Health Department.
Yeah, I understand we don't have control over that. But we do have control over the list that we would provide to the Health Department.
And we tell them, these are our priorities. Yes.
Exactly.
Yes. So we can, we can tell them that these are our priorities, but again, they have to carry it out.
Exactly. But I, but I do think it's important for us to try to have those priorities in place if we have folks that, that are more at risk. And let's say their accommodations haven't run out or whatever. I, you know, I certainly think that we ought to be thinking about that and our, and our folks.
Yes, ma'am.
That need all that. So I mean, I would just highly encourage us to do that as a system, I think. I think also that we'll have people be able to come back to work that probably would be taking a different route. So I think that that might help the staffing issues that we're having and some things like that. Because, you know, if they've got two options, and one's not to be there in a certain way, and one's to get a vaccine, then, yeah, I mean, I think it would help our staffing and our, and all of those things.
I think Board Member Mott Singer had her hand up before you did, Board Member Jones.
Yeah. Yeah. I was just a little confused as to why Davie County has been able to come up with a plan, and we haven't, and I understand, it's been very confusing. I think the mandates that came from National DHHS were kind of dumped at the last minute, right before the change in administration. I think there is a great desire on the national level now to really bump up and get vaccines out, including distribution and manufacture. And I just, I can't stress enough, and I hope, I know the rest of the board agrees with me, that we want our people vaccinated as quickly as possible. And if there's any way of putting pressure on, I know that's what every person who serves wants for all of our staff.
Is that a question to Ms. McManus?
So, so my question was, why was Davie County able to come up with a plan that is now been publicized, and we have not?
Yes, so, I appreciate that question. We probably can't answer for, on behalf of Davie County, but I think Ms. McManus would like to share, just to reaffirm that you have had conversations with other healthcare partners. Maybe you can just reaffirm that quickly.
What we were just saying, it's really up to the Health Department in terms of the distribution.
Okay.
But still following the state rules as well.
Okay.
And how much have the locals, say the county Health Department versus the statewide Health Department? Is the, does the individual counties have any leeway?
I'm not aware of the, the leeway. I think a lot of the driver comes down from the state. But I think the best person to answer that would probably be someone from Forsyth County Department of Public Health.
So, Board Member Mott Singer, I think my, what might be a good request, you know, from you, and maybe the board is, maybe our staff can talk with county health officials around county expectations from the state, and if there is any autonomy on decisions that can be made regardless of, you know, the state or federal level. So, maybe they can get back to us. I, I think there was a...
Yeah, I would just, obviously, the urgency, and I would, again, I assume, I know that every board member would agree with me that this is of utmost importance.
Yes, thank you, Board Member Jones.
So, has the, has the ACT been canceled for this year? Because I know that that's a state thing, and so, if I'm not mistaken, that's, we were looking on the calendar, there's a day in February or something?
Okay, so, so, so the delay, the three-week delay wouldn't, wouldn't cause a problem for juniors if they're not on campus? It's juniors, right, juniors?
Right, exactly. So, so no, and, and when we, when we do the ACT testing, regardless of if we're in school or not, we will likely need to look at doing it like we're getting, getting ready to do the upcoming testing on the twenty-sixth, and have a day, boy, that's a flex day for other students, and just those students who are testing come in, so that we can, you know, adequately monitor and supervise that group of students. We can only do testing situations in groups of ten right now, so that means we have to maximize the use of our facility and spread out and use more rooms. So, regardless of what plan we're in, we would make that happen for them.
And so, but you're saying that during this, this three-week break, it wouldn't be then?
No, I don't think it's then at all, yeah.
I just thought that might be...
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. Before we move into the action item, I'm going to try to expedite that part by sharing my thoughts. I wanted to make sure that my fellow board members had expressed their concerns and questions during this robust period of time where we could really engage effectively with our superintendent and staff. But I, I wanted to just share a few points that I had. I don't think there are really any questions, but I, I do want to really thank the, the attendance of Dr. Alexander to represent our principals. And the focus point of my conversation, or my points, rather, is about her participation here, representing the people whom are what I call where the rubber meets the road, boots on the ground. And for her to come in and talk to us about the capacity at our schools based on the principal perspective, that sort of weighed super heavy on me. And, and I'll tell you all, my bias is, I was trained and certified as a principal over sixteen years ago, and have spent, you know, out of twenty-three years, pretty much twenty of those inside of school buildings. And everybody outside of the school kind of see things a little different than how we see them and how we act every day. And so, even when folk from the district come into a building and they visit your school two days away, two, two days a week sometimes at best, you know, the first thing we'll say is, they don't know what's going on. They come here two days a week. So, what I would just caution any visitors to schools during this time is that coming in to visit a school is not the same as every single day that you're in there doing the work. And I think that's what Dr. Alexander is here representing, that the work that has to be done every day, the principals are just right now in front of this board, whom I know it is scary to say, hey, we support the superintendent's position to put a pause in because we consulted with the superintendent before the superintendent came before you with this recommendation that's based on scientific evidence, that's based on our ability, according to CDC guidelines, to build capacity around our mitigating strategies. I totally am empowered tonight to hear the great debate on this, you know, up here with these board members. I don't think one is right or wrong, we're just doing the best for our children. I, I mean, I think that our debate tonight was one of the best I've seen, because I think it's coming truly from our heart and mind to do what's best for our children. I ultimately fully support the current recommendation of this superintendent, but if it's the will of the board to try to figure out how to get ninth graders in, because we can't, from a majority standpoint, vote tonight to support the superintendent. I just don't want to go in the direction that we had on the table originally before tonight, because I think that would not be representative or respectful to the principals, the expert advice, and the leadership of our interim. So, with that being said, I will move to the action item, which is to consider approval of the high school student return recommendation. Is there a motion?
This is Elizabeth, I would like to actually make a motion that we pause all school, all grade levels for, until February twenty-fifth. Second.
Any question or discussion? Okay, all, all in favor of the motion to return, all, to pause all grade levels?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Okay, so there's two, any opposed? All right, so that, that motion fails. Is there a motion to, is there a different motion? Because there was no second to the phase re-entry high school student return updating recommendation currently by the...
I, I make a motion to adopt, stop the recommendation given by the superintendent.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further question or discussion?
I, I have just, I don't know, so, I'm, I'm not sure where, where everybody's going to land, you know? But, but if, if, if what, if, if, if the motion that's on the floor right now fails, then we're back to school with no compromise, you're back to school with the original plan.
I think you could, someone could make a motion.
Right, so that's, that's what, I mean, I mean, if we, if we are truly saying, which I'm, you know, which I have no problem with personally. But if we're truly saying, and what I'm hearing from a principal, a good principal, that's, that's saying, her colleagues are saying that there's some obstacles there, they don't feel like that they can bring them all back, you know, we have to trust that they're not prepared, then, then we, we can't, we shouldn't do that to our, to our kids and to, to the staff. So, is this a, I don't know what that is.
It's a pause, I think?
No, I mean, no, there was, I kept hearing somebody else talking. So, if... Oh, okay, so, is this the, is this the appropriate time to make a substitute motion?
Right, so the motion I made was to accept the superintendent's recommendation to pause the re-entry of high school for two weeks, one week of remote learning.
We have, we have...
Based on, exactly as she presented it to us.
Okay, yeah, we, we have that in this second, yeah, so...
So, maybe it should just fail, I mean, maybe we just vote on it, and then we could do another motion?
The substitutes drive us in a...
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, so, thank you for that clarifying point, we don't want to do the substitute motion. So, all in favor of the motion to, of the interim superintendent of the pause for two weeks for high school? Please raise your hand, or say aye if you, or you could raise your hand, actually, just do the raise your hand option on the teams, Board Member Bramer or Mott Singer.
And I, I think the pause was for three weeks, not two weeks.
It's to return the twenty-second.
It's already a week built in, so that's why it's two weeks. Okay, so, so it's three from my count in support of the superintendent, myself, Board Member Mott Singer, and Board Member Bramer, you have that, Deion?
Just to confirm, Ms. Mott Singer, Ms. Woodbury, and Ms. Bramer were voting in favor of that motion?
Yes, I am too.
Okay.
Those whom are opposed? So, that, that motion has failed.
So, so I would like to make a motion around what Ms. Kaplan had said earlier, around, you know, trying to compromise. I hear high school principals don't feel comfortable coming back with everyone at once. So, I would like to make a motion that we, we move forward with the return of the ninth-grade students, and we move forward with the return of our CTE students. And then, then we bring back the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade students. And as far as that timeframe goes, I think you'll have to, you know, we'll have to, you'll have to help me with that, because if some are on two cohorts, maybe, maybe these, the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth do not return until February, the week of February twenty-second. That way, you have ninth graders coming in, CTE students coming in, then we have a week of remote learning already, and then tenth, eleventh, and twelfth could come back the week of the twenty-second.
So, pausing next week, and then starting them on February first and February eighth, is what you're saying, correct? Because then the fifteen, it's a one-week pause, or are you saying next month?
No, I was just saying next, like, on our original, I didn't, in my motion, I didn't have a pause, just bring back ninth grade.
So, just so already, just to correct something really quick, it's three weeks before the remote learning. So, basically, the twenty-second is four weeks away. It would have been three weeks delayed, because there's one week of those that's already remote. So, does that make sense? So, next week is week one, February first is week two, February eighth, I believe, is week three, and then the fifteenth is a remote learning week. Does that help?
Yep, so how, how long does the, how, with the cohorts, how, how long, how, how many times would that circle around for our ninth graders?
Yeah, the larger high schools, so, so basically, the larger high schools are broken into four cohorts, and so those would actually, if you started next week, you would end up with a week, like a spare week, kind of. You know what I mean, where one group will get to come, but the next week, the next cohort wouldn't get to come, if that makes sense.
I understand that, I, I, you know, I, 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 I hate that that remote week, I mean, that, I know that's already in there, and there's a lot of things already planned, planned around it, but I would, I would still like to see them, I would still like to see them come back. You know, that, there might be another motion, especially our CTE students. We're already saying that they're struggling for, that they're struggling for their hours.
I think they were going to come back though regardless, of course, if they were, if they were faced with losing any time for that certification.
We would do what we did last time, and look at the hours, if, I know Ms. Grant's watching this. If you would, Nicolette, if you could let me know specifically when they would need to come back, I think that would be helpful, as your team looked at the hours. Oh, there you are, hey, hi there.
Ideally, it's as possible.
Okay, okay, let Ms. Grant come up really quickly.
Sorry, I didn't see, I thought I saw you, and then I...
Just FYI, there was a motion made.
Let me look at my phone.
Are we in discussion now, there hasn't been a second?
There hasn't been a second.
I, I don't think I've finalized my motion.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I just wanted to hear if I, just to get the, the dates correct, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Good evening, board members. So, we have several CTE courses that really need to get in as soon as possible. Carpentry, electric, automotive, especially our seniors that need a lot of hours to make sure that they get their hands-on curriculum. So, as soon as possible would be the answer. Even with any delay, we'd have to find some alternative ways to get the kids in school to get their hands-on experience, to make sure that they do not lose out on the opportunity to get credentials.
Thank you so much.
As soon as possible for many of the courses.
Thank you. So, Chair Woodbury, could I clarify my motion, I'm sorry?
Yes, please do.
Okay, thank you. So, I make a motion that the week of January the twenty-fifth, we bring back the CTE students. Then the week of February first, we bring back the ninth-grade students. That will be those two weeks for them, and then you have the remote learning, and then the, the week after, which is the week of the twenty-second, we would bring back tenth, eleventh, and twelfth.
I second the motion.
Any question or discussion? Geez, I had a question, but let me see here, I'm looking at these dates right here. Oh, so, so I do want to make sure we all understand, as of right now, just so that board members know technically and logistically what we're facing. If there is, the motion previously failed for the interim superintendent's recommendation to put on pause, and so, if this motion doesn't pass, then we'll revert back to the original plan, which I think all of us adamantly just don't want to go to the original plan. We want to take into some consideration the, you know, where the super, the superintendent is offering to us as advice with the support of experts and the principals. So, I just wanted to make sure we were aware of that before we take the vote. So, with that being said, all in favor of the current motion? Okay, any opposed? Okay, Board Member Bramer, are you taking a vote?
Opposed.
Okay.
Is Ms. Mott Singer opposed or in favor?
She opposed.
She's opposed.
Opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, so that concludes our meeting for tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
There are no questions or discussion, let it be known with aye, so consensus?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us on Your School Channel.